... Governor, please.
Larry Hall, Poppy, Kerwin, Vandyne, Kirby Hall, Persick, Studer, Tudor. We have a quorum.
The special meeting of the Wilmington City Council on November 12th, 2013 is now in session. Council, some of you may know, some of you may not be aware of why we're here. Hopefully, everybody knows why we're here tonight. As we all know, the VFW has been holding their Queen of Hearts raffle for quite a while now. I think, I don't know how many weeks have been going on this one. So, as the number got up and the traffic and everything, and the people continued to climb, myself, as well as police and fire and ESDA, sat down always to try to regulate the traffic control, to try to assist in the movement of people, so to speak, to ensure that the public safety issues were addressed. So, a couple of weeks ago, you've probably seen the start, where ESDA was out there directing traffic, and more or less just making sure that people had a safe path across the street as it's going into the VFW. It happened again last week. Same thing happened. We have three officers on staff for four hours, and we also have four ESDA guys. Part of their, every week, they have to get a special event permit, so those guys are all compensated. There is money, there's dollar value set up. I think it's $40 per ESDA guy per hour, and I believe $70 per hour for police officers. We did, met with the VFW personnel, Terry and the commander, Terry Yosserobi, as well as the secretary, Gina Wills, discussing what we have come up with in regards to the security issues and making sure everybody was on the same page. As we're discussing all this, the discussion came about it as far as the raffle license. Apparently, the VFW was inspector, somebody came in, noticed they didn't have a raffle ordinance, the call was made. The city hall instead of wasn't under license, so the staff put raffle on the license. Something that's been occurring over many years, because the VFWs have handled raffles for quite a while, not Queen of Hearts, they also do raffles for bingo, as well as other things. When that issue was arrived, Mr. Urban, who was at the meeting as well, let it be known that the city doesn't have a raffle ordinance. And by state statute, the raffle ordinance is required for any organization, be it profitable or non-profitable, to conduct a raffle within the city by statute. Which led us to where we're at tonight, is to create that raffle license, so all those parties that are out there, nonprofit organizations, can continue to conduct their raffles. Does the Queen of Hearts highlight this? Absolutely. I'm not gonna, you know, it highlighted the issue that we're presented with tonight. The license that you see before you is basically right, state statute, kind of follows state statute rules, as put out before the state. There are some blanks in here, if you look at section four on licensing. The city has the right to put a limit on the amount of, how much a raffle could be. Some municipalities have a limit, some don't. Also, the maximum retail value of each prize awarded by licensing a single raffle shall be whatever's blanked as well. There's maximum that we also put a, there's also in there the maximum number of days during which chances may be issued or sold shall be 90 days. That's something that we can extend to a longer day period. I know a lot of specialty booster organizations or schooling organizations may have raffles that are longer than 90 days in nature. It may be 180 days in nature. And we also put the, I also put in there with the limits, whatever we determine to set our limits with, if they don't become effective until January 31st, 2014, that is up for debate as well. Doesn't have to be that way, you guys can implement it, you know, immediately. That's up to you guys. So, kind of where we're at, why we're here tonight, discussing this. We all know that the Queen of Hearts raffle is tomorrow. From what I understand it from legal, if an ordinance isn't passed, then raffles can't be conducted, am I correct on that, Mr. Green?
The conduct of a raffle is gambling under state statute, and the only exception to that would be if the entity does have a license, raffle license, pursuant to an ordinance, either the city, or raffles conducted within the city, or some incorporated, will counting too, will count. So, in the absence of an ordinance, then the conduct of the raffle would not be accordance within Illinois law.
That explains it in a nutshell. And it's not just the Queen of Hearts, I mean, but there are other raffles going on and stuff like that.
So, is it, if the school is doing a raffle for any sporting events, then they will have to have this as well?
They'll need a raffle license, yes.
Okay.
Do we have anyone from the VFW present to?
No.
Talk to, talk to us about this?
No, they, they asked if they should be here. I didn't think it might be necessary, because, you know, is it just about the Queen of Hearts? No. You know, I think it encompasses all raffles that occur within the city. So, I didn't really want to make it, even though, you know, the Queen of Hearts has highlighted this whole issue, I didn't want to make it a VFW issue. I wanted it to be understood that this deals with the regulation of all raffles that occur within the city.
Is the city liable? Oh, go ahead.
So, the VFW would be, if they fill out a form, they're gonna do a multiple raffle license, which is also the same for possibly schools, they have multiple licenses, it's not like a single license, I mean, raffle, single raffle.
Right. But the school only do it for like 90 days?
And, for, yeah, for that, for that period.
So, they have to do this every time they have a raffle, anybody?
Within that 90, after that for that 90 days, correct?
Yeah. Basically, you have, under licensing, you have broad discretion in terms of how long you would like to have a raffle stay in existence, maybe we'll just want to have, take a sole over 90 days, but draw chances over 180 days or a year. But you can decide the maximum value that can be.
You mean the amount that they can have?
Right, at any one raffle, or the total, aggregate amount if they're gonna have more than one raffle. Some organizations might have, you know, three or four raffles at one time. I think the VFW may have Queen of Hearts raffle, but during the course of the evening, they may have a split the pot raffle. So, I mean, you're looking at organizations that might only have one raffle, you know, over a period of 90 days, and then draw a winner. In regards to the VFW or other organizations, you know, they might want to get a multi, a license for multiple raffles, because they're gonna conduct more than, you know, a few raffles over the course of 90 days. So, that's totally within your discretion. And...
How much does it cost for them to get a, to fill out this application?
Well, that's under...
$10 or $30?
That's under $10 or $30. That's under section 10, and that's totally within your discretion as well. Under letter C of section 10, there's a provision fee for a single raffle license, is zero dollars for the first license in a 90-day period, but $10 if they want to get another single rightful license in excess of one within 90 days. And a multiple raffle license would be $30, but those are all numbers that are, you know, your discretion, if you want to charge any money, or if you want to charge $10 for every license, but...
I think at the same time with discretionary stuff, say we deal with temporary licenses for other things, usually if it's a for-profit organization, the licenses tend to apply if somebody's doing it for issuance of profit of business, or so to speak. But we're a non-for-profit organization, whether it be the VFW, or the boosters, or something like that, they're non-for-profit, so you could still have that opportunity to waive those fees if you so choose, you know, especially if you're a nonprofit group.
Well, I'm not gonna waive them.
Is the city liable if they have this event, and there isn't a, and there are probably minutes, and there isn't an ordinance for...
Raffles.
Raffles. Yeah, so if they have it tomorrow, say we don't pass this tonight, tomorrow they're gonna have it, you can't seem to stop them. Will County or the state comes in, is the city of Wilmington responsible, or can be held liable to any one?
Well, I don't really want to discuss that. But, right now, if the VFW's got a license, it says they got authority to conduct a raffle.
Well, they have a...
Yes, right.
So, they're legally in the eyes of the state?
On first blush, if somebody were to walk in there, they've got a license on the wall that says "raffle license," but the city doesn't have a raffle ordinance to give them one.
Something's been going on for several years, many years.
Well, I understand, I'm just asking if the city's liable.
But I'm thinking, if we're, you don't know what you don't know. So, if, but if we're made aware of it, and we know that we should have something that we don't, and we allow it to happen, I would believe that we then would be liable, in my mind.
See, if something does happen, we go into court, we're not liable, that's our, that's our position, because we didn't, you know, that's our position, but of course, the other side's gonna say, you know, we are liable. So, your best position would be if they did have a raffle license through a valid raffle ordinance.
Up until Friday at 11:30, last Friday, 11:30, I didn't think there was anything out of the ordinary with what they're doing, because it's been going on for years, through, you know, they have raffles through bingo and everything else.
Everybody in town, it's not just them.
But, once the issue was raised, now we have, the city have knowledge, okay? We have knowledge, and in fact, we don't have a raffle ordinance. So, yeah, we do need to pass a raffle ordinance, or unless, you know, the council says, we don't want any raffles conducted out within the city of Wilmington.
Well, why couldn't, if we, if we did, if we did pass it, why can't we, what's the word I want to say about revisiting this?
Amended later?
In, say, in six months, or...
And absolutely, and I've spoken to some, I said, this is something that, other than the blanks, really kind of followed the statute. And can we put more stringent regulations in it? Yes, we just can't make it weaker than state law. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, this ain't normal, I don't like how we're doing this because of the situation. So, this is something I don't want to go to bed, so to speak, when we pass it, it's something that I would want to be brought up at the next ordinance and license meeting, starting next month.
Absolutely.
Okay, to look at the issues in greater detail, to find out, from a council level, not only committee level, from a council level, do you guys want more tighter regulations within the raffle ordinance as we go forward? So, yeah, it's something that definitely can be revisited.
And, another thing is, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
When, we already know of one organization who would need to be made aware of this right away if it's passed, but how then would we get ahold of all of the other organizations? Would it be by way of letter, I would, the website, the newspaper, how are we gonna make everybody aware that they have to have a license?
Those same avenues, at the same time, you know, we will reach out to the school to find out who the representatives are for the boosters and the cat backers, which, you know, I know pretty much who's in charge, or who's party to that type thing, where we can advise them of the situation and what we're looking at. So, you know, that's the process. Are they gonna be immediately affected? No. You know, I think maybe one of the organizations got a lot of raffle type thing going on, but it doesn't start until for a couple more months. So, you know, it's just a whole process, just as we look through things, and we could go in through it in detail, which is what I'd like to do, you know, and how we set things up, and hopefully, we can get a consensus, you know, go vote on this tonight, to move forward in this, so...
In response to Oliver McCall's question, I think that the best answer is that the city would be in a much better legal position if you did have a raffle ordinance than if you did not, so...
As a governing body, are we legally allowed to issue a raffle license without an ordinance in place?
No.
The state issued it, didn't it? No, neither.
We did?
We're the issuers of the license.
But to tell you the truth, I never ever thought of it. I never ever thought of it.
You know, and I'll be honest with you, as the discussions came about, I mean, we're discussing a number of things, and primarily, our biggest thing was making sure that, through the whole progress of the meeting, was the safety of the public, to ensure that, you know, and discussion even went on between us and the VFW was, you know, if there becomes a point where this gets, where, you know, traffic's totally congested, where my police officers and my fire department guys are saying, you know, this is just, we're very nervous about this, we're very nervous about getting good calls, that where we go to the VFW and say, next week, that's it. Okay, that's how this whole thing started. And then that's when the VFW raised the issue of where they had actually been fined by the state, because they didn't have the actual raffle license, it didn't say raffle on it. And then, just from that conversation, that's when John raised it to us, the city, the city don't have a raffle ordinance, because he was looking through our stuff. We took the time to look through the book, we have miscellaneous licenses and stuff like that, we took the time to find out. When we came to the conclusion that no, we do not, then we knew that we had to act, rather than play ignorance. It was more vital for us to take the action than what we're here tonight, than to say, okay, let's, no, let's pretend we didn't discuss it.
Can we just, an idea of that permit?
Only one?
Couldn't we deny they had that permit? You said they had one of those.
They've got a special event permit, it's already been filled out.
And they do that weekly?
They do that weekly. They, that is done by the chief of police, and that just deals with the event, because of the tent, everything else, and what amount of security is gonna be needed.
When did they file it?
Last Friday.
When was the meeting?
After that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's obvious that we need an ordinance to cover this situation. My problems with the current ordinance that's put before us are numerous. I do know that we'd like to get something done tonight, but there are several things in here that are gonna have to be addressed immediately by ordinance and license, if we're to pass this in this current form. This current ordinance calls for a maximum, the event can have a proceeds, whether it be single or multiple, which we haven't filled out yet. It gives a maximum charge for a single ticket at $250. It also talks about record-keeping, and it says records shall be kept, and grocery receipts shall be counted. It talks about persons in the organization who can and cannot participate in collecting these revenues or counting these revenues. And then it also talks about keeping records for three years, but nowhere in here does it talk about any city organization, whether it be the chief of police, or whether it be the liquor commissioner, or whether it be the city attorney, auditing any of these findings, or keeping any type of order to this. We even have a sentence in here, we're gonna charge not less than $250 and not more than $750 for violations, but we don't talk about in this ordinance, how we're gonna enforce or determine those violations. So, you know, if we do pass this thing, you know, we've got a lot of cleaning up to do today, you know, if we're passing this tonight, we need to start cleaning this thing up with the next ordinance and license meeting, because it's got some serious problems.
I think with a lot of stuff, even in regards to the records, even deals, just even with business in general, okay, any type of business has got to keep books and stuff like that, and how they do it. And, you know, let's say, deals with sales tax or something like that, and the state inspector walks into that business and wants to see their books, that person has to provide them the books at that time, okay? There's no way that that state inspector, or anybody's gonna have any type of knowledge of whether, you know, if that, if it says he brought $100 in the till that night, well, did he, or did he bring 200?
Well, I guess my point is...
You have to go on the premise, you have, I mean, you have to go on what, you know, what's presented to you.
Well, we have the right to ask for that, I mean, we have the right to have assessed some sort of rules here, right? If we're gonna give, if we're in a Queen of Hearts game, you know, I guess we need to have some sort of rules on how it's operated. I mean, is there gonna be some sort of accounting for tickets that are sold on a weekly basis? And if so, who's keeping track of those, and where can we view them and count them if we want to find out if they're accurate? I'm just, you know, I'm just saying to you that there's no teeth in here, and there's no way to enforce, we're putting in place a fine and a sentence, but we don't have any way of, we've created no rules for these events.
And, you know, Frank, maybe that is right, but my question is, do we have the right, even though we're, we're, this is all here, but do we have a right to go to that business and say, well, how many tickets, do you want to see the tickets?
Well, my point, if we don't, we're allowing illegal gambling. It's one or the other. Either, either it's a charitable event, and you're proving it, or you've got illegal gambling, or it's one or the other.
By following the Illinois Gambling Act, which I think is regulated by the state.
Right, there's a Raffles Act. I've got a copy of applicable sections of the state statute in regards to gambling, and also the Raffles Act. Pursuant to the Raffles Act, it's a requirement that each organization, after the conduct of the raffle, report the results of the raffle, not only to its membership, but also to, in this case, the city. So, the city would be getting a report listing all of the income and the expenses, and, you know, all the winnings, so that's something that's required under the Act.
So, they're saying, they're saying that, that they, well, for instance, I'll just come out and say, somebody asked how, who counts the money, all this, you know, above the, these proceeds, and they said, came right out and said, it's none of your questions?
Well, under state law, that's not possible, that's why there's a penalty provision in here. If they don't provide the information, they can be prosecuted. The statute provides, and it's incorporated in the proposed ordinance, that each organization has to appoint a raffles manager, and they have to post a bond. So, they're in charge of ensuring that everything is run properly, and records are supposed to be kept. If they fail to make the appropriate report, then they can be prosecuted. So, they're not allowed to state, well, manage their business, because under state law, they're required to disclose that information. That's why the state statute allows for the conduct of raffles, but it has to be pursuant to the Raffles Act. And unless there's a local ordinance that allows raffles, then under state law, it's not allowed in, it would be gambling. But a lot of the, a lot of the items that are in this ordinance are straight up, right out of state statute in regards to requirements. There's a few things in here that have been added, such as the licensing amounts, and the maximum amounts that can be, you know, raffled, that's not controlled by state statute, it'd be up to the city to decide, and...
That's something that needs to be done, we need to control how much is there.
Right, and, this is right out of state statute in regards to the individuals that are ineligible to participate in a raffle. That's also in the state statute, it's in the Raffles Act. So, you know, once you pass this, you're gonna want to look at it again, you know, within a month or two, and fine-tune it to try to, you know, see what else you might want to change in here or modify.
I find that the terms of bond are a little confusing to me, too, John, in here. You know, it says, terms of bond shall provide that notice shall be given in writing to the license authority, but not less than 30 days prior to cancellation. It doesn't say the amount of the bond, or what the bond is covering, or how it's revocable.
Where was this gotten?
That's something that could probably be added into the ordinance in regards to the amounts, you know, which might be tailored towards what the total raffle amount is might be.
It also says you can, the city council can waive the bond requirement.
It does say that also, but it doesn't say, it gives no direction on how the bond, what the bond's to cover, and how it's to be revoked.
Where was this gotten from?
What's that?
State statutes.
From where?
State statutes.
No, from the state.
Oh, what?
It's, it's in reference to the state statute, it's in reference to the state statute. John, dump them together, I have the board.
Oh, okay.
So, as of right now, they do not have to disclaim any information to us, because we do not have an ordinance, correct? Or do, she was told it's none of her business, they have no, they have no reason to tell her, because we don't have an ordinance, is that correct?
No, I think, I think probably what happened is the person that said none of their business doesn't know, doesn't know the one, okay? And what's, because we really never had anything in place. You know, I think they, like I said, they've probably been getting this raffle license since the 70s. You know, I don't know how long they've been getting, you know, the raffle license for the city, but there's been nothing in place. And how long, I don't, when did this Raffles Act take effect, you know, by chance, John?
I think perhaps in the 90s.
Yeah. And this, this code came about the same time, because it used to be that everybody had, could do bingo.
Oh, they did, church.
Everybody did bingo. But once the state started to regulate it, which probably was the same time about this raffle ordinance came about, as you noticed, nobody does bingos anymore. Churches, everybody used to do bingo, okay? Now, it's just pretty much, your VFWs, American legions use the state to do bingo, it's that you don't see that wide variety of bingos like you did in the years past, once the state started to regulate it. So, that might have been about the same time this raffle ordinance came into play, was the same time the state started regulating bingo licenses, so, I don't know, but that's just kind of what I'm assuming, so...
So, what happens, just say, if, what happens if you don't pass it tonight, then what happens with everybody going to this tomorrow night? You're gonna tell them that they're not gonna, all these people coming in, you're gonna let them stay?
Well, that's, that's...
I mean, you could have a very big...
Second, the weekly license.
Well, I know that, but you could have a big...
Oh, yeah, you could have a weekly license. And that's why, I understand it, what we're doing is not, like I said, it's not even in my nature to do it this type, the way we're doing it.
Yeah, I understand that.
I understand it.
I understand that, it just all came up.
If we were to actually close the doors on this tomorrow, because we didn't pass an ordinance, we might create a worse situation than what we're doing now.
Can you just do it for one night? And then, but then again, it's gonna...
It's still, we're not gonna be, you guys aren't gonna be meeting till the summer.
For what?
First ordinance.
Yeah, but what stops us from having another meeting?
Well, then we, then we write it till then, that's my suggestion. I don't like throwing stuff together in this field, might throw them together. I'd like to discuss it.
And we just have one more.
Well, that's why we're here.
Oh, I, I don't like it.
That's why we're here, is discuss it.
And that's why I'm, I'm worried about...
It sounds like there's a mistake that was made, and we need to rectify it tonight before tomorrow, and then...
Yes, that's right.
There's, in my reading between the lines, there was a mistake made by the city, and we need to fix it tonight.
Yeah, you could say there was a mistake, and it's not that there was anybody to point a finger at or point...
Not trying to.
It's, it's lack of knowledge, but once that knowledge become present, last Friday at the meeting, then it's our responsibility to correct that.
So, I agree with Frank, we have two options. Either we pass it tonight, and come back right away and look at it, and fine-tune it the way we need to, or we don't pass it. Those are our options.
I think we have to have a couple extra meetings to get this done. I'm not waiting till December.
I have a question, John. Is there a grace period on this? We approve this tonight, is there a grace period?
There's a grace period written into it, that gives them...
Oh, to, to...
No, it's, it's effective till January.
No, it'd be effective tomorrow.
Effective, but they, it gives them till January, notwithstanding the dollar limit, amounts shall become effective until January 31st, so...
Correct.
Whatever amounts we put in here to finish this ordinance are not gonna apply to this raffle going on right now.
We can tonight say, we don't want any raffle to exceed $100,000.
What's that?
Tonight, we could put that, if you got 150, I'm pretty...
Well, it's already over.
But it's over there.
But that's what I'm saying, it's not gonna affect, notwithstanding until January 31st.
That's where the exception comes in.
That would require a license.
What that does is put...
What, what that does is put in place that any future ordinance or any future raffle, after the January thirty first, two thousand fourteen, that limit is in effect.
But did John Hunt also say that that date is flexible with the January thirty first? If we wanna make it January first, we could do that.
Exactly.
We can make it March, we can do it June.
You know, whatever, if being necessary, we just kinda try to put that date far enough out there to where, you know, you don't wanna say it's a hundred thousand dollars and then you have this mad rush tomorrow where everybody's thinking tomorrow's the last day, you know, and it creates utter chaos, you know, in that area for, you know, five, six, seven hours. So you try to put that limit in, you give a time, time period down the road to say, if you're still at this, above this level when this date hits, the raffle, before then you're gonna have to pick a winner, okay? And then everything that, any raffle that comes about, no matter what it is, after that has to be.
They have to draw until they get a winner?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's.
But I'm just saying, you're gonna give everybody ample time, not just, not, you know, everybody's focused, I know, on the Queen of Hearts. You gotta look at this in the whole broad spectrum, there's any raffles down in the future.
It's fine, but they can't get a license by tomorrow if we approve it tonight.
Yes, they can.
We're gonna waive a thirty day prior to the raffle so that they can be licensed?
Yeah.
And if we fail to notify them, they're in violation and possible seven hundred fifty dollar fine.
Right, we'll notify.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Right, absolutely.
Like I said, it feels a little.
We know that there's, there's issues within this that cannot be complied with by tomorrow night, six o'clock, okay? I understand, you know, we take those things into consideration because of the nature that we're dealing with this. I'm fearful that if we go the wrong way, or if we don't pass anything, we create a bigger problem for tomorrow than, than working on this, to allow this to continue, but also put those parameters and those, those things in place. And I'll be honest with you, the, you know, the concern is getting, is starting to elevate with my police and fire department, and the fire department in regards to the amount of traffic that this is being generated. Fortunately, okay, we've had the opportunity to see at what level the raffle, this Queen of Hearts raffle has generated this amount of traffic. Basically, know that limit.
I for one personally think, and I may be completely off base, I don't think the traffic in town, you're gonna have those people going to the Queen of Hearts, 'cause that's what we're talking about, but I do not think the traffic in town would be as bad if we weren't dealing with the construction on fifty five and the thousands of people that are trying to take that bypass to get around it. So, we're dealing with all of this at the same time, which is what's causing the biggest issue with the police department and the fire department, and as to, is probably a compilation of those two things.
A combination of many things.
Is there any possible way that if we were to pass this tonight, that we can tell the VFW that this is the last, next week is it, you have to pick a winner? Can we, can we, as the council, make that decision?
What's your point? Why would you do that?
Yeah, why would you do that?
So that it's over with. They have to pick a winner next week, and that's the end of it.
Aren't we defeating it then?
No, what is?
We've got fifty-two weeks.
Is that what you're, is that your point here, to try to get rid of that thing? I mean, tell me what, what you're.
Well, I think, I think to, just to subside it for now, and then we go, then we go back, look back into this and, and, and come up with parameters that we want, that we want to follow. Just tell them, hey, you got one more week. If they don't pick a winner tomorrow, next week, you just tell everybody that's it, we're gonna pick a winner and that's all.
I don't know how you, I don't know with what rule, with what rule of law you would have the authority to do that, given the way your raffle license are holding the raffle. You can't make the rules for them, I don't know, you know, if you don't do it ahead of time, I don't know if they're not written in the ordinance, not yet.
Why did the New Lennox quit the Queen of?
They didn't.
Or they did?
No, no, that was, I mean, there was rumor going around that the Lennox quit it, it got too big. They have one, they have one drawing, they, they have tickets sold all year long.
My name, those are two, I think every third.
Just, you know, I mean, the Queen of Hearts is becoming a big thing in, in the whole area.
For the VFW?
VFWs, I think, I think there's even some bars that are probably doing it. I know Mantino VFW is conducting one, I think there's about Tuesday night, I've heard the Stone City VFW is gonna be starting one as well. I think that issue was raised in Joliet because gambling, the boats and stuff like that, we're concerned about it, that's the story I was hearing. So it's not uncommon. I've seen one in Rockford in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their Queen of Hearts up there, for their VFW up there. So it's, it's everywhere. I mean, it's, it's a game, it's really created a lot of, you know, it's a rollover raffle, so to speak, and it's created a lot of fervor in the area, and VFWs and other organizations have tried to capitalize on that, which is, you know, capitalist market, and they're just trying to do what they can, you know? I think the VFW, fifteen percent of the earnings go towards their scholarship fund, the other fifteen percent goes towards the next raffle, and then the rest goes to whoever pulls the Queen of Hearts, so. It's not that, you know, none of these, any entity, non-for-profit organization that has a raffle, you know, there's, there's always a significant purpose, you know? But at the same time, a lot of it is at the approval of the membership within that organization. So it's an organization.
So should we start going through this and trying to get our answers to these blanks?
Absolutely.
Not the blanks that are in here. There's no blank.
Well, under, under section.
No, that other was for them to fill.
No. Under, under section, under section four, which is under section four is what the blanks are. Where, in our ordinance, under the ordinance, section four A.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
We're basically saying that the aggregate retail price value of all prizes are merchandise awarded by the licensee, and a single raffle shall not exceed X amount, okay?
Yeah.
You know, whether you put a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, that's, that's, like I said, before the debate comes in. You don't wanna make it too small, for, just for the simple fact, let's say, the Foundation of Excellent Hazard Golf Outing, they have raffles and stuff going on too, who's to know what their amount is, you know, especially if they're raffling away a car or something by chance, I don't know how that, that follows under the same rules, I don't know, you know? It is, still, it's a game of chance. So, you know, what limits do you set those in? I'll throw out a number, everybody's silent. I was gonna throw in a hundred, I would, I would suggest a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's what I was.
And then when it gets there, what happens?
They have to draw?
When, yeah, when you, when you hit that point, that's when that entity, whoever, that non-for-profit organization, or when they're getting close to that point, especially if it's a rollover raffle, like what we're doing with, then they gotta make that announcement.
You met every wish.
So, you know, but, like I said, for this one that's going on, we'll get down to E, whether we wanna remain, leave that in there, you know? I think it's better if that, that number's in front of a, a organization before they start their raffle, so they know it, and not halfway or three quarters of the way through it. And that's why, that's where the date come into play with January thirty first, to where, you know, it gives them ample time.
Yeah, with the amount of cards left in this game that they're playing right now, they could run this single march.
Absolutely. There's, I think, sixteen more cards left. So, I'm throwing a hundred and fifty thousand in there for now, is, are people okay with that? Do you wanna put that?
I buy that ticket, so, you know, I'm.
Well, okay, so hypothetically.
Let's just say there was no raffle going on, you guys got taken, except there's nothing going on, where would you set your limit at? I mean, don't, don't, you know, you guys are.
You're gonna assign the public's chance of winning money?
You know, a good point is made, John. By limiting that, you're, you're limiting the public's chances of winning, winning money, and so, where do we put that?
And then where does that lead for any other raffles that really could get big?
I mean, the, the state does a Halloween raffle for a million bucks, you know? They sell twenty dollar chances for that, it's no different, you know?
What you have in section four is you're putting the maximum aggregate retail value for a raffle at a certain amount, but it also provides for, especially approved in advance by a majority vote of the city's corporate authorities. So if someone wants to apply for a license for a certain event in excess of what the city has provided, they can always come to the city council and ask for a specific approval for that amount.
Well, let's put a number in saying, keep going, get this done.
What do you want?
Does anybody else have any suggestions on what they, you know?
You can put, you put a million dollars, that's a mountain.
I don't see, my, my opinion is, I don't, I don't see cutting this, this one short just because it's already started.
Well, I don't either.
But, you know, as soon as this one's over, then we can bring it back down to where we don't impede this particular raffle, 'cause you're gonna make, you know, you can't go in halfway through a change.
Put a riot on your hands. Yeah, you absolutely were.
Well, let's, let's do this, under section A, can we put it, do we have to put a dollar value in there, can we put just not applicable for now?
Why don't we just go, I mean, if we're gonna set it, if we're gonna put a number in there, let's set it high, knowing that we're gonna come back and readjust it if we need to. Either five hundred thousand or a million. What does, because technically, does it really matter?
Not really.
I don't think it really does. I don't know. I don't think it really technically matters.
What are you saying, Pam, you're shaking your head, do you think?
I agree with Frank, I mean, doesn't, I don't see the need for a, if there's a frenzy at eighty thousand dollars, there'll be a frenzy at four hundred thousand dollars.
There's gonna be a frenzy at twenty thousand, so. The game has to end, I mean, it has a finite amount of target in it, so, you know, it's only gonna go so far.
So we will then look at it after this.
So, do we keep, do we just put something in there that says we?
Unlimited. How's that sound?
All right.
That's fine.
We're not.
But you are letting them know we're, are looking at this again.
Oh, I think it'll be very well known in tomorrow's paper.
Oh, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, that's right.
No.
All right, so.
Those are the very.
You got a grace period.
Facebook, the license.
The maximum retail value.
I think the city of.
The next line should be the same thing, it's just. I, I agree, I think, I think the next line should be the same. Does it really matter if it's a multi-raffle or a single?
I think the village of Lennox has seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there.
We're gonna come back and look at it then.
Seven hundred and fifty in Lennox.
Unlimited. Unlimited on B.
Well, we can always change that, but we'll do it.
Now, I have a question.
If you have an unlimited amount, you have, da-da-da-da, okay, hold on, I'm getting ahead of myself. What about the maximum number of days which chances can maybe issue or sell? I mean, do we need ninety days in there?
I don't like it because of the fact that they, this, you know, the schools.
How long is Cat Becker's other, I mean, months?
That's exactly right, six months. In the same way that, you know, in the same thing that.
The boosters.
The boosters do, with they, they start selling those, those tickets for their lottery game six months in advance because they try to get, get them out there, you know. Is it safe to say? They're trying to sell, there's a thousand number, you know, number combinations, they're trying to sell them on. Is it safe to say that most of them don't go beyond a year, right? Would that be safe to say?
I think so.
I would say so.
So let's. I think a year would be.
Well, but they rolled over too, doesn't it? I don't know.
So C or D would be one year?
Oh, that's fine. Somebody's powers change it.
Yeah, we can get it.
And let's go back to C for a minute. Is that two hundred and fifty dollars what's in state statute?
No, that's a particular discretion. It's just like for a single raffle, too.
Okay, so, let me throw a hypothetical situation out. If Frank's selling tickets for Cat Becker's or whatever, and he has some that are twenty dollars and he has some that are a hundred, those are set. If you have something like the Queen of Hearts or the fifty-fifty at the high school or whatever the case, are you saying that people can't?
Single ticket, it's not a chance.
Single chance, yeah. One ticket would be two hundred and fifty dollars.
You can buy as many as you want. It's not, they're not limiting the amount you can spend, they're just saying the amount you can charge per ticket.
Yeah, right. What it's basically saying is if I'm having a raffle, what, I cannot sell tickets for more than two hundred and fifty dollars for each ticket.
I see, okay, okay, yeah. You know, and if, if, if somebody. You see where I was going, 'cause somebody's coming in with a thousand dollars. Let's say a developer wants to raffle a house down here, you know, he may come to us and say, hey, you know what, I'm gonna offer these for five hundred dollars apiece, and I'm gonna give away a half a million dollar house, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to, you know, up that or change it. But those are the kind of raffles where you're getting that kind of money for.
Yeah, single ticket, that's. I know the things where they're gonna probably, it's gonna be presented at a, at a council level anyway, 'cause they're gonna be aware of the, they're seeing that level.
Now, are we aware of any Super Bowl squares that go five hundred thousand dollars a square that they go on and tell?
Those are all illegal. Those are all illegal? None of them, you can't get a raffle license for a Super Bowl game, you're putting it in sports profit.
I know that, you used to.
No non-for-profit ones.
We'll put it this way, just like there's probably statements that always had, sign the book type of thing, that's a form of illegal gambling. It occurs all the time, it's not regulated, I think that's something that is regulated.
Just leave it at two fifty.
All right.
Now, with the limits set at unlimited, you really don't need section E right now.
Section what?
E, E.
January thirty first.
It don't become effective January thirty first, no longer.
January eleventh.
It's no longer mandatory, you're not gonna put eleven on the side.
All right, so we'll strike E for that.
But when we come back, okay, but when we come back to visit this, is this something that we don't wanna strike and forget that was in there?
We'll have, we'll have a copy of this in the ordinance with this.
It'll be revised.
Okay? And I think when the ordinance and license committee meets with this, okay, I doubt it's gonna be leaving their heads anytime soon because this is something that's been, you know.
I'll have a copy.
We spent a lot more time on a raffle ordinance than we do some other ones, with a lot more money.
Oh, yeah, and you're absolutely right. If this game wasn't going on, and we're sitting here, you know, there's more than a slice of talk about this, it wouldn't have near as much appeal to anybody.
It would, if, if we didn't have what we had in front of us tomorrow, I guarantee you, this would be something that would go through probably two or three meetings in ordinance and license, then come to council for two or three meetings, and maybe six months later it'd be packed, okay? But the, the nature of when it happened, not just, I mean, the Queen of Hearts, but every raffle we have going on in town, it is a legitimate raffle, for any organization becomes, you know, has that potential to be, not even be able to exist because we don't have this in place.
Well, more than that, the fact that the city's actually been giving out permits for years and years without an ordinance in places.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Since nineteen eighty.
Another question is too.
Yeah, for the record, before this administration.
Who came, who came into the VFW and said they had to have that license?
It was actually the state liquor inspector.
Okay, but how many times have they been in there and they've been raffling off a lot of things before the Queen of Hearts?
Because we gave them one.
Because for years, when, when, when a business comes in, entity or whatever, okay, whether the, the VFW, VFW has numerous licenses, well, let's say with the liquor establishment, okay, they're walking in in April or November and they're getting their liquor license, they're getting their musical entertainment license, they're getting their gaming license, they're getting four or five licenses all in one shot, okay, they're coming in, go, Okay, they're coming in, go, 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 we're paying for all the licenses right now.
Don't forget things, though.
Well, I'm just saying with different, so, a lot of times, staff will tend to incorporate everything that they're allowed, if you want one license. Am I correct, Joey? So it's, it's not, you know, why give this guy five sheets of paper, you know, where everything says the same, but just the license change, thing changes? So why don't we just put everything on there that it has? It's been going on for years. So when the VFW came in, they got their liquor license, they got their gaming license, they got their musical entertainment license, they get their bingo license, and they get their raffle license too. Because even before Queen of Hearts, they always had raffles during their bingo terms, and they still have them.
For this week, in all service licenses.
When they have their bingo, they have their raffles.
They're raffling off in nineteen-eleven in there right now for ten books a year.
Yeah, see? So, hey, you know, that's, that's just kinda how it progressed, you know, and, but we're fixing it now.
No, that, well, I, I agree with that. Can I, one more thing, when we're doing this, do, do they have to, do we have a right to tell them who is counting all of this money?
Does, you're, you're a business. Does a state inspector have a right to, to make sure, to look over your shoulder when you're doing yourselves tax everything?
Yeah.
Do they have, I mean, they can if they want, but do they?
No.
But if they come in to look at your books, they, they take what you're telling?
Yeah.
Okay? Is it totally true? We don't know. It's, it's, there's that, you know, there is that realm of, you know, trust factor that you have to have to play in in any type of business, you know? Um, happens all the time. I mean, even with, with, you know, when somebody's walking in to make a purchase, you got your employee working there, and somebody hands them fifty dollars in, in cash, okay? That employee may just not ring it up and just put it in his pocket, and away it goes. Is that, is that our, you know, you know how this, that stuff will, but there is a level of responsibility, and now, once they pass this, now they're gonna know what their level of responsibility is. Not only to the city that they have to show us those numbers, but also to their membership, which I think is more important.
I don't know, does, does the state have an, an authority officer over g, uh, raffles that, that could actually come in there and ask them to produce every ticket they sold and see whether the, the amount of the prize of, it equals the ticket sold? I mean, is it, does that exist?
I don't know.
I don't know either. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, let me ask you this.
I can find out, but I don't know, if, if I was working for the state, I don't know if I'd wanna walk in and count every ticket in that horse drop. I don't, I wouldn't.
And you're talking, you're talking like seven weeks...
If you're over a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's pretty easy to lose twenty or thirty thousand tickets, you know?
But you're losing, you're losing seven weeks of garbage.
And this, and it's where the whole thing comes to play, okay? Who loses? Who loses? The, the, the membership or the organization, who are those members? That's who loses with any raffle.
We know.
Whether it be the VFW or, you know, the boosters or whatever, if, if somebody's skimming off the top, okay, then that organization is trying to raise the funds for whether it be kids or service members or whatever, they're the ones that are losing. And it's really, you know, I look at it as responsibility of the members to stand up and say, hey...
My, my point, Marty, is that it's the same way that, that gambling votes are, are audited. Once it, once somebody starts skimming to that point, it needs to be taxed. It's because it, at that point, it's gambling, and it's gambling profits. If some, you know, and I'm not saying it's happening, I'm just saying, how do you regulate that?
Yeah, I don't know if they have...
When you get to a game the size of this game, you know?
I don't know if it follows under the Illinois Gaming Act, and I'm sure they got their regulators, I'm not sure. John, do you know by chance?
Basically, the, the way the statute is written, it's up to the municipality to adopt a raffle ordinance. And it can be more strict, but it can't be less lenient than the state statute. The state statute requires that after every raffle, the manager of the raffle has to disclose to all the membership, has to open the books to all the membership, to show how much money came in, where the money went, all the expenses, and report has to be made to the local municipality. If that isn't done, then, you know, they're subject to be investigated by the local municipality.
You know, I think a lot of, I know ours don't, I think a lot of, um, Queen of Hearts raffles are out there, are, are managed by a company. You know, they're not managed by the, um, by the organizations themselves. They're actually managed by a company. I think they used to be, but I don't think they are anymore. Um, but I remember talking about, there's, there's companies out there that actually, they run the Queen of Hearts for the four, you know? So they get their, you know, five percent or whatever their, 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 you know, commission is, so to speak. So, um, I think what this could actually incur is to, um, try to promote that to these type of organizations that have these large ordinances to say, hey, hands-off approach, let me hire somebody to do this. You know, which there, which the organization has every right to do.
Yeah, with numbered tickets at, at the beginning and then, it would easily...
Now, you really can get the organization to see how many years old.
Um, I think if they're, now, by the creation of this, because, I mean, even though it's already in there, there's a level of accountability.
Okay, then now they're gonna know that.
Right. From the city standpoint, they're gonna know.
They're gonna know that we are...
More importantly, their, their, their members need to know. I mean, if I was a member of any organization or having a raffle, I wanna make sure that the money that we're raising is going to them. You know, it's just like, for years, um, people weren't contributed to United Way forever, okay? They're gonna find out, you got these big guy, these head honchos of the United Way taking all this money, making it affordable, okay? So what did it do to the United Way? Killed. I don't, I donate to United Way, they're just stealing my money. So there is a level of responsibility from the membership to make sure that they're, you know, they just go on to where it's going.
Do we need to look at ten C? Are we, is that something that is within, do we need to look at that before we just make a decision?
Page ten?
On page seven.
Oh, the B for the raffle license?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
And B, I mean, we need to look at all of section T-ten then, I would think, to make sure we's on or...
Well, we can change that later, too.
Yeah.
If we don't think that that's...
Oh, yeah, we could.
If we don't think that that's an appropriate fee for this game, I guess we, we can change that later at ordinance and license, right?
But I, I, I mean, as we go through this, and we don't even have to set fees in these right now, we could...
Go ahead.
And, and the license fees, here's, here's my thing, it's not, I mean, I'm not gonna also turn around and say, hey, you gotta pay stuff, all right? The man hadn't paid for years. But I, I still think there should be that discretionary level in there, in any type of license fees, when you're dealing with non-for-profit organizations, there should be a level of, um, of waiving that fee, you know? Simply when, like, a state government comes in for their, they have their, you can, they need a special liquor license for maybe ten dollars from the city.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, a hundred percent of the time, I waive it for non-for-profit organizations because, why? You know, that, the money's to benefit that organization. So when you're looking at this, why, you know, if I got the boosters or whoever coming in looking, they gotta pay thirty or forty or fifty bucks, they're already in the hole before they even started. I don't like doing that. So I still think there should be that level of, uh...
I do have one quick question to clarify.
Yes, they have the waif, the, for non-profits, and it needs to be...
I'm going back to what Helen said, if, if it is a state law or whoever, if they're governed, that they cannot say it's none of your business, who has the right? Does anyone have the right to ask that question?
Membership. That's why we're getting to the membership. Lack of knowledge.
Lack of knowledge.
Lack of knowledge.
Okay. That's, that's my one question.
And I, it probably was, it probably was a member that asked, okay? So, it's, it's lack of knowledge. Now, this, this becomes knowledge, this becomes knowledge for anyone. If I'm a member, I wanna know, I, I'm, you know, thinking of, so, all right? So in regards to the license fees, um, for right now, I'd like to just, uh, C and D to, to, to strike the fee charge for right now, um, but not applicable until we readdress the, uh, in more, in greater detail. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
But are we gonna wait till next month for the next ordinance meeting? Are we gonna have a special meeting on this?
That's gonna be up to the, uh, the chair people, the, uh, ordinance and license committee and the dwell committee itself. Um, and we can't, we can't do it tomorrow, we need, we need a forty-eight hour notice.
Do you think we should meet again then, Kirby, this month? Sometime? Before December? Because we might have another...
And you can, you can do it in, in, you know, let's say...
When are we gonna look at this again?
Well, here, here's how...